It is 6 o'clock, so I'm gonna call to order that. This is a little bit of feedback there. Okay. The staff review meeting for the Murray City Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, June 17th, 2021. Present are Commissioners Jake Pearson, Lisa Malkovich, Travis Nate, and Sue Wilson is on Zoom, and I am Maren Patterson. Jeremy, I think is, honestly. Oh, oh, great, okay. From staff, we have Jared Hall, Zach Smallwood, and Susan Nixon. So we'll start with our agenda. Approval of minutes. We had two meeting minutes this packet, the May 20th minutes and the June 3rd. Has everyone had a chance to? Do you see anything that needed any changes? Corrections? I thought they looked good. Okay. So next, we had one findings of fact for Ingenuity, Inc. Was there anything in there? You had questions or like corrections up? Okay. Then we'll go on to our agenda, conditional use permit, Agenda Item 4. For KL Ventures.
Yeah, so I'll be taking this one. This is just a conditional use permit for a private gym to be located at the address 333 West 6160 South. They are a very small operation. They currently have a building on the same property. They just don't. They're, they're two individual people, and they're trying to combine their operation and be one gym. So they're gonna be operating out of both spaces. He already received a conditional use permit. Now this, since we do it on individual properties, they will, they're looking to go forward with this one. The only really, the main thing I want to kind of bring attention to is the parking in this one. I did do something a little different here and asked that the Planning Commission approve the eight spaces that, that the applicant has stated that she'd be needing. We don't really have a standard in the land use code for parking of gyms. So that's, that's kind of what I'm hoping that the Planning Commission will recommend. She doesn't anticipate having more than eight people there at any time, including herself and, and any other trainers or anything like that. So, uh, any questions I can answer?
Is this CrossFit too? So are we gonna be like pushing tires between the two buildings?
Uh, like I said, I, I think I put a condition that no outside stuff will, will happen. She wasn't very clear about if it's kind of CrossFit. But if I had to make an assumption based on appearance, yes, they are built. So, um, they are buff people. So I would think so, yes. Yes, I am, I'm gonna say that in the meeting. They are built.
Okay.
Any other questions or anything for me?
Okay, pretty straightforward. Um, okay. So Agenda Item number five, uh, one year extension or, yeah, one year time extension for preliminary subdivision of Tripp Lane. Susan, yeah?
Yes, so the Planning Commission reviewed this in July of last year and granted preliminary subdivision approval for 10 lot subdivision for Neighbor Works on 871 West Tripp Lane. And due to the easement getting through, the road getting through, et cetera, they have asked for an additional one year extension. So per their request, if you feel that is valid, then you are welcome to approve it, grant the additional year. That's really the bottom line.
Has there been any resolution at City Council?
Not yet, but we're close.
Getting closer. And then I would qualify anything that's happened as progress, but there's been activity. So we're, but we've never, we've never put in a resolution yet.
I have a question about this. I have, I, I've served on Neighbor Works Loan Committee in the past and have had a relationship with Maria Garcia, I consider her a friend, Garcia's. Should I abstain from this, or is that a conflict of interest?
Are you currently on there?
Nope, I'm not. It's been a while.
I wouldn't think it was any conflict.
If you're not on the loan committee anymore, I'm just.
Okay, I, I mean, I know Maria Garcia is, like I said, if she was here, she'd probably come give me a hug, like we're friends, but is that maybe not? It's COVID, maybe not.
If you just wanna make that statement, but I don't think it's a conflict. And just, unless that influences your decision or whatever, but then, then if, yeah.
You're not gaining anything.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you don't have, you're not on the loan committee. You don't have a way to financially benefit from this project.
Not at all, I just know I'm really wrong.
Should be good.
I can't, right, adds like 30 pounds. Yeah, exactly.
So anyway, the, the extension would just be subject to the original conditions, which I've listed, but they're not on the PowerPoint this way. So go ahead.
So is the issue, I think I was, I went up here for this originally.
There's many issues.
I think I was here during the meeting when they talked about it, but I didn't pay close attention. Is this the issue where they're trying to get the road through, but there's a property issue? Is that?
Yes, the adjacent neighbors own a little, for lack of a better word, a protection strip.
Yes.
A little, yeah, so that is preventing the road to go through.
If you look on there at the bottom, there's one little partially hashed area.
That is purposely.
Purchased by the same.
Purchased to stop the road from going through. And so what is their, what are they trying to do?
So they can, so we've got a couple of appraisals for that portion of property, that little 200 square feet.
I think it's, I think we'd be buying more than that. But it's 200 square feet is all we would need to get the road.
Yeah.
It goes halfway, it's five feet wide, goes halfway across the right away, not 20 feet across the.
And is the landowner willing to sell that? I see.
They don't wanna sell it, but they've had appraisals to offer it, to offer it, or.
And they don't have immediate access to the property. It's on the other side of a fence. I see. It's not doing anything.
Yeah, in the city council. In a field, on the way to the junior high.
Yeah, there is pedestrian, pedestrians can cross it, but no vehicular at this point. So, and the city council was, is reluctant to use eminent domain, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
So maybe I should understand this in the discussion, but is there, that is holding up the process? Is there anything else holding up the process? It looks like it's clear cut, straightforward, but is there anything else happening behind the scene?
Nope. No, and I don't know if the applicant, I think they'll be here if they will want to expound or not, but that's the gist of it.
Sorry, one more question.
Yeah.
And we were unwilling to approve the project that the road did not go through? Or they just applied for it that way?
One of the conditions is that on 1B, that they obtain the private property and extend into the existing Willow Cove right of way, or provide a cul-de-sac at the south end of the subdivision and.
When they presented it originally, they kind of presented two ideas, the road going through or the cul-de-sac. And we, with staff in the presentation, had talked about the connectivity of this area and how it's really lacking, and that this would support and help bring more connectivity to this neighborhood and to this whole area. But they did present, and I, and another way to finish these lots with a cul-de-sac.
Right, thank you.
Sorry.
No, good. So, yeah.
Yes, there's lots, if you have more questions, it was a very complicated.
It was a rough meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of.
There's a lot to know about this project, for sure.
So, just so you know, that because it's just a, an extension of time and not an actual approval, just extending the.
Good time, right.
Didn't have to send out mailings to neighbors.
Okay.
So what, just out of curiosity, is, I mean, Neighbor Works is typically building low income housing, what, what are they building on this?
I think originally that was their plan, but with the cost of the property, et cetera, as they got into it, they discovered that they wouldn't be able to develop affordable housing, so they're just gonna sell the lots.
That's what they presented to us, was that it was gonna be market rate for the lots.
Yeah. And you'd have to find your own builder.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good question.
Susan, I have one more question for you. Just make sure I understand the process. So if we're extending a one-year extension, are there any limits to that? Can, I mean, they may come back four times if there are barriers.
No, no, our code is actually very specific. They can request a one-time, one-year extension, and you have to request that before it expires, and it expires July 16th of this year. So just one more year is all they get.
That's super intriguing, because then property owner could have the city council dodge the issue for another year and not have to address it.
Then they would have to come back, at whatever time they got the res, it resolved, they would have to reapply for a subdivision and come back again, just like a brand new, like, kinda like we did a week or two, the last planning commission, they had to reapply and go through that again.
So Jefferson, that one? Okay. Any other questions about this project there? Lots of, okay. And then we'll move on to Agenda Item number six, Murray Burton Ekers Lot 59 Amendment.
That would be me again. So this property is in the R18, on the corner of Bellevue and Afton Ave. It's just about 15,000 square foot lot. Back in 1999, a variance, area variance was granted to split the properties, and the two lots would then be approximately 7,500 square feet. So they do not meet the area of the R18 with 8,000, but it's variance, and the variance runs with the property. A new owner of the property has decided to exercise his rights to subdivide the property, and so it would meet all the, the new lots would need to meet all the R18 regulations except for the area. So it would still have to meet setbacks, heights, everything else. So in order to do that, he is technically amending the Murray Ekers Lot number 19, or excuse me, 59. And I know that that, probably your packet, the plat map was not the best legible. So if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them. The new lot, which is the south one, 59B, is going to have a very small buildable area, but the developer, the owner, has indicated that he has house plans that will fit. The lot's only 75 feet deep, because it would face to the west. And, because it's 75 feet deep and you've got 50 feet of setbacks, so that leaves a 25-foot footprint for a home. He has indicated that he has house plans that will fit on that. And let's see, what else? So, yeah. Any questions? I, that's kind of.
Have you got any public comment about this?
Yes, we, we had two that were in your packet, and then another one from the same individual earlier today, and I can read that into the record.
Perfect.
Yeah. Just talking about his view and, so, yeah. So, anyway, they'll, they'll, they'll have to go through the plat, fine tuning and reiterations of the plat and finally get it down to where it's acceptable to our engineering and city counts, our county recorders, and then have it recorded and come back and apply for a home building lot permit. So it's pretty basic, just.
Okay. Any questions about this application? All right, um, our text amendment to update the section, all those numbers, temporary signs.
Yeah, so this is an application. Sorry, just got an email. Hey, Tino, I'm getting an email saying that, that it's really hard to hear us. Yeah. Sorry, give me one second, just.
No worries.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing.
Yeah. Okay.
All at the same time? Okay. I'm first. How's that? Can you hear me? All right? Yep, yep, yep.
I'm the second, can you hear me? Oh, hello, hello.
Sounds better.
Hello, testing.
Oh. Your sound's off.
Testing, testing.
His mic's a little wonky.
Hello, oh, there we go. Yeah, I can hear myself now.
Mic check, testing.
I'm really shy.
You're balancing out, Maren, having been a roadie.
Exactly, there you go.
Everybody.
Okay, perfect. Awesome, thank you. Okay, so this is a text amendment to the Temporary Signs Ordinance. As it states in your packet, we received some, some questions from the city recorder about political signs and whether they needed to obtain a permit, because our code says that, that you need to have a permit for temporary signs. So we looked into it a little bit more, and that was conflicting language. Typically in state code, if there's conflicting language, it goes to the property owner. But instead of just doing that, we were like, well, it would only take a little bit just to update and delete some of the, the, the language in here to clean it up. So we reviewed some, just that whole little section, and decided that the things that needed cut were either redundant or didn't quite make sense, and so we are proposing to do that. Any questions? It's pretty, yeah. Come on, Lisa.
I have a question. Um, let's see.
Question over here. Question in the back.
Go for it.
Um, on number 9.8, where it says no off-premises temporary signs are allowed, what about real estate agents that have their open house signs or directional signs or, you know, developer signs, you know, point people towards their subdivisions? What are, what about those?
Those are listed as part of residential signs, signage, so it's covered there. Yeah, it's covered in another section of the code.
So what would, what would the process be for, for a political candidate to obtain?
Right now?
Yeah.
Right now, they would have to, each individual, each sign, they would need to come and get a permit from us, saying where it's going to be, how long it's gonna be up, they need to give us a copy of the sign.
Has anyone ever actually done that?
We have had, political, political signs, no. We have had probably five, five in two years. Obviously, there's been a lot more than five temporary signs in the, in Murray.
Well, full disclosure, I forgot that we were asking for permits for this.
So. So Jared just tells people, no, you don't have to do things, so.
Me and Zach make them do that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, but to be honest, there was conflicting language that we didn't realize was there either. So technically, Jared was probably in the right by telling them, no, they didn't need to do it. So, um, yes, okay. Lisa, you had a question?
Number five, the strike through and the new one, it could be me misreading it, but it might be a little confusing still. Number five, the one you struck through, you said it not necessary to list all those things, because you can post something on a fence or a tree. The numbers, the new number five says it needs to be secured to a building or the ground. Is a building or ground, a fence or tree mailbox considered attached to the ground is therefore fall in that category?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm not worried about that. And if they did, I mean, technically, a fence is a wall, and, and a tree could be technically the ground, so.
Okay. But it's right, I thought, oh, how about a tree?
Yeah, no, I'm not too worried about that.
I didn't, I didn't, and maybe I'm, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see the definition of the word temporary. So how long, how, how long can a sign be out?
90 days.
Number nine, on the clean copy, it's, the temporary signs are allowed for up to 90 days.
Is it in the definitions of the sign code in general?
Probably.
What's everyone's thoughts about, about, one of the things that drives me crazy, and this is, admittedly is a pet peeve, is somebody could put up, so is there, somebody could put up a, a political sign the day before the election, and then it could be up for three months after the election, and that drives me nuts. So is, I mean, what, what would people think about, you know, a temporary sign that is attached to a political campaign within 14 days, 30 days must be removed?
Doesn't the state have a law?
It's not. It's all right, you're fine. It's actually that case law that I cited, Reed versus Town of Gilbert. We're not allowed to read, pretty much, we're not allowed to read the sign. So it doesn't matter what type of sign it is. So you could put up that you're selling puppies for 90 days, the day for election, and it's allowed to stay for 90 days. So that's the problem, we can't regulate, I can't go.
I just don't vote for the people who leave their signs up, that's.
No, I don't like it either, I don't like it either, but.
But the thing is, you don't know until after the election if they are the people who leave the sign up.
Yeah. And that's the difficult part.
You can tell, right?
Someone's gonna leave this, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the hard part, is that, that it made it really hard. We can't regulate the content on a sign, and therefore we can't, we can't reasonably tell or distinguish what, what sign is what. So, and we can't create regulations to it.
We actually used to have that in the code, but it was 15 days.
Was it?
We actually took that out because of that case law.
That's. Darn attorneys.
I got really confused when I was on page four, and it said that I would be, or it would include redline copies, and then I looked for my redline copies and didn't find redline copies anywhere.
They were blue. I'm sorry. They were blue and purple.
And that works.
That's why you asked us to be here, right? Details.
Yes, details, details, I know. So any other questions I can answer on, on that one?
I just have one question about the public right of way.
Sure.
So all the parking strips in the front are, are public right of ways, pretty much, right?
Correct.
So in theory, political signs can't go there.
Should not be there. And, and, and Mark can come out and take them out, so.
Yep, thanks.
Cool.
Does this include people's homemade signs telling me about conspiracy theories that they attach to like?
It's on their private properties.
On the freeway?
Yes, we don't get to read those either.
Yeah, but those are in private, public property, so we should take those down.
Yeah, if they're in the park strip, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
They're on the side of the freeway.
They're, oh, hooked to UDOT fences, right on.
The challenge with those ones that go over the freeway, and you see those on the fences all the time? The campaign people put them on those all the time, because they know the city's not gonna go over those, because that's UDOT.
And UDOT's not gonna.
We won't go mess with those.
Yeah.
But as a public citizen, I should.
Maybe within your rights.
Or not.
Jared, don't ask Jared for legal advice, don't do that. Okay.
Any other questions about the temporary sign code? Okay, then we will close our staff review meeting and wait till our recording stopped. Um, I will call to order the Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, June 17th, 2021. It is 6:31. Present this evening are Commissioners Jeremy Lowry, Jake Pearson, Lisa Malkovich, Travis Nay, Sue Wilson is joining us on Zoom, and Ned Hacker is excused, oh, and I am the Chair, Maren Patterson. And Ned Hacker is excused for this meeting. From staff, we have Jared Hall, Zach Smallwood, Susan Nixon, and Bryant Farnsworth with us. As the Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission, I, Maren Patterson, have determined that due to infectious disease, COVID-19 novel coronavirus, holding an in-person meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those in attendance. Under these circumstances, Utah Code 52-4-2074 allows for electronic meetings to be held without an anchor location, so long as the public had an opportunity to view the meeting and submit public comments. We are holding tonight's Planning Commission meeting via video conference, and the meeting is being livestreamed at www.murraycitylive.com. If you have a comment to submit to the Planning Commission regarding one of our agenda items, please do so via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. So we will begin our agenda items with our business items. We had minutes, two minutes from the May 20th meeting and the June 3rd meeting. Have all the Commissioners had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And there were no corrections or any changes in the pre-meeting? So I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the May 20th, 2021, and June 3rd, 2021 Planning Commission minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Great, we'll go with Commissioner Lowry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, motion passes. Agenda item number two, do any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the agenda items this evening?
No.
No.
I would just wanna point out that I have, I have served on the loan committee for Neighbor Works in the past. It was, it's been almost a decade since I was on their loan committee, but I know the organization well, it would not, but it does not impact my, my judgment of them.
Okay, great, thank you. I do not have a conflict of interest either. Agenda item number three, approval of findings of fact. We had one conditional, conditional use permit for Ingenuity, Inc. Have the Commissioners had an opportunity to review this findings of fact?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I can make a motion to approve the findings of fact for Kathleen Gerwick Doing Businesses Ingenuity, Inc., as a conditional use permit to allow a tattoo shop business within the MG zone on the property located at 150 West, 4800 South, number 29.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move on to KL Ventures, Agenda Item number four, applying for a conditional use permit to allow a private gym located at 333 West, 6160 South. Is the applicant on our meeting? Great, so we will first have our staff, staff report.
Okay, thank you Commissioners, I appreciate that. Let me just get this going. Okay. So this is a request for a conditional use permit from KL Ventures. The address is 333 West, 6160 South. You can see, this is 300 West on the right-hand side of your screen with the track stations, 6160 is at the top of your screen there, and this is located just within that private street of 6160 South. There's a little, little building. She'll be, she's proposing to operate a private gym in that entire building, so that's all gonna be used for the gym space. This is pretty straightforward, it's in the MG zone. Gyms are a conditional use, athletic facilities in general are a conditional use in the MG zone. She provided a floor plan, it's largely open, it just has an overhead door over here on the left-hand side, the 12-foot over, overhead door, two standard doors, one that's on the, on the top of your screen here, labeled number one, and off to, on the north side of the property, on your right-hand side. Excuse me. Took a few photos a couple weeks ago when we got the application. It's pretty, just a brick building, pretty standard, pretty vacant. So you can see there are two dumpster enclosures. I don't think they're gonna generate enough waste for two dumpster enclosures, but I think it is shared with some of the other property owners as well. Additionally, I did talk to the applicant, this fenced area where there is a shipping container, you can kind of see it here, I had a better picture. That is not part of her unit, that's part of, excuse me, going back, it's, it's closer to, it's being used by the property immediately adjacent to her, the, the building adjacent to her, they're using it for outdoor storage, so that's not going to be a problem, she's not using that for anything. So with that, there's not much else to it. We're just recommending that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the eight conditions. Actually, one thing I wanted to bring up was the parking, I didn't, I forgot to bring that up. She is proposing, she stated to me that there's only going to be about eight people there at any given time, including herself. So since we do not have a standard in the land use ordinance for gyms, the Planning Commission can make findings that, for parking standards, and I am recommending that this should be adequate for the use that's being proposed here. So the Planning Commission can move forward with that recommendation if they feel comfortable. Any questions I can answer at this point?
There's no landscaping requirement, is 6160 a private drive?
It is a private street, yes.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Sue?
Yeah, I just had a question. On the application, it shows two addresses, it shows 333 West, 6160 South, number 15, and 6060 South, Third West, number 17. Do we need to mention both of those addresses, or no?
No, the, the second address is where they currently have a. No, um, the the second address is where they currently have a a gym operating and has obtained a conditional use permit. So really, the only one you need to, um, the only one that is I guess, being reviewed tonight is 333 West, 6160 South.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any additional questions? Okay, um, if the applicant, do you need them to raise their hand or?
I know who it is.
Okay, great.
You might just want to let her know what she needs.
Okay, yeah. Um, if you, when you're unmuted.
Can can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you will state your name and address for the record.
Um, it's Carrie Larson. Do you want my home address or do you want the address to which we're going to be having the facility, the gym?
Any address is fine.
It's going to be 1 South Cross Hill Lane, Sandy, Utah, 84092.
Great. Thank you so much for being with us. Um, did you have an opportunity to review the conditions of approval?
I did.
Awesome. And will you be able to comply with those?
Absolutely.
Great. Is there any additional information that you would like to give the commission?
I have, I have a question about handicap parking. Is that going to be something that you need us to comply with as well?
Yes, um, and condition number three. Um, and you can work with staff to um, work out the requirements of what an ADA compliance space would be.
Okay, and how many? Yeah?
Yeah, I think just one.
Yeah, there, I apologize. This is Zach. Uh, you'll only be required to provide one. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I think there might be. Okay.
One there already?
Um, it doesn't look like it, but uh, we can, we can talk offline after it's been approved.
Um, okay.
How how that can be, how we can get that installed.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think the only, and I'm sure you guys will talk about this more, but it just needs additional space to the side to be able to have access to that parking spot. So I think that's the only thing that would be um, a change to a normal parking spot. So, yeah, you can work with staff to work with that out. Do you have any other questions about any of the other um, conditions?
I don't. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, well, then I will now open the meeting for public comment regarding this agenda item. If you would like to make a comment, you can do so by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Um, did we have anyone that registered to make a comment in the meeting? Okay.
No.
So we will um, leave the public comment portion open for anyone to send in an email.
Okay. Okay, so we're resolved and all is good?
We are just waiting for any public comments. Um, have we received any?
Okay, okay.
Okay, we haven't received any public comments, so um, I will close the public comment period and bring it up for any discussion um, or a motion from the commissioners.
Okay, good deal.
I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit to the operation of a private gym business at the property address 333 West, 6160 South, subject to the to the eight conditions listed below.
Okay, I have a condition or a motion by Commissioner Lowry to approve the conditional use permit to allow the operation of a private gym business at the property address 333 West, 6160 South, subject to the eight conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second by condition, by Commissioner Malkovich. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, we can take a vote.
All right, uh, Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes, so um, motion passes and congratulations on working with your new gym.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will move on to our next agenda item. Um, agenda item number five, a one-year time extension for preliminary subdivision for 871 West Trip Lane. Um, is applicant with us this evening? Okay, great. So first we'll have presentation by um, our staff.
Thank you. This is a request on behalf of Neighbor Works of Salt Lake for a, an ex, one-year time extension for the subdivision at 871 West Trip Lane. Property is located in the R18 zone, actually at the end of Trip Lane, the west end. And planning commission reviewed this a year ago on July 16th of 2020 and granted preliminary approval for a 10-lot subdivision um, with numerous conditions. The applicant has been working with the adjacent property owner to the south to acquire a small portion of property in order to connect the road through. Um, planning commission at the time they approved was uh, subject to either connecting the road or redesigning and or with a cul-de-sac, and I believe the applicant is pursuing the connecting of the road. However, they have not been able to acquire the property, so uh, they have applied for an extension of one year and our code does allow a one-time extension of one year, provided that they make that request prior to the expiration, which would be on July 16th. And then they have another year in which to come back to the planning commission to have final subdivision approval. If they don't come back within another year, then they would have to reapply for a subdivision approval. Um, so the extension of if the planning commission chooses to grant the one-year extension would still be subject to the original conditions of approval as uh, you've all received in your packet. And um, I think that's all. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer them. I believe the applicant is here to respond if more, more needed.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I missed this before. It's a one-year extension and it expires in July, so if if an extension's approved today, it'll be from July to July, so July 2022?
Yes, it would, uh, July 16 of 2022. Correct.
Thank you.
They just have to, yeah, request that before it expires, so yes.
Any other questions about this application? Okay, then if we will um, talk to the applicant, when you um, are unmuted, if you would state your name and address for the record?
My name is Allison Tries and our address is 43, 40, my mind just chipped one. 4843 South Poplar, Main Poplar Street in Murray.
Great, thank you for, thanks for being with us tonight. Um, so uh, have you had a chance? I mean, I know that you've probably already reviewed the conditions in the original preliminary subdivision, but uh, have you had a chance to review and comply with those conditions?
Yes.
Wonderful. And is there any additional information that you would like to give us regarding this application?
No, I don't think so, but thank you for considering it.
Okay, great. Thank you for being with us. Um, now we will open the meeting for public comment regarding this item. If you would like to make a comment, um, you can do so by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Or do we have anyone register for a live comment? Okay. Um, we received a few comments in our packets already, but if there are any additional email comments that you would like to send in, we will leave the public comment portion open to any comments. Have there been any emails? Okay, we will close the public comment portion then. Um, and I will open it for any discussion or a motion on this agenda item.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to the planning commission grant a one-year time extension for preliminary subdivision approval for the Trip Lane subdivision at the property addressed 871 West Trip Lane, subject to conditions one through nine.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Nay to grant a one-year time extension for preliminary subdivision approval for the Trip Lane subdivision on the property address 871 West Trip Lane, subject to the nine conditions, and a second by Commissioner Pearson. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, we can take a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. Congratulations, the extension has been approved, so good luck with your project. All right. Let's move on to agenda item number six, um, subdivision amendment for Murray Burton Acres Lot 59. Um, is the applicant with us? Okay, great. We'll have our staff report.
Thank you. This application is for a subdivision to the Murray Burton Acres Lot 59, which the property is addressed 400 East Bellevue Avenue, um, located on the corner of Afton Avenue and Bellevue Avenue. The applicant, um, Just Property Management, recently acquired the property and is desiring to split the property. Uh, it's currently 0.34 of an acre and just under 15,000 square feet. In 1999, the previous owner um, applied for a variance to the area of the property in order to subdivide the property. The property is in the R18 zone, which typically requires 8,000 square feet. The variance was granted for the property to be split with the two new lots to have approximately 7,500 square feet. All the other regulations in the R18 would still be applicable, except for the area, minimum 8,000 square feet. So setbacks height, et cetera, would still need to be met. Variances go with the property, so even if it was a previous owner, that does not matter because it very stays with the property. So this proposal to subdivide lot number 59 would create two new lots, 59A and 59B. 59A would retain the address of 400 East Bellevue and the new address, 59B, would be 5963 South Afton Avenue. Lot 59A would have 7,452 square feet and the lot 59B would have 7,500 square feet. So do you want to go to the next picture? That, yeah, so I kind of cut the, split the property in half on this picture that you're looking at now, just a little closer up here. So the top half, the north half is on the left and the bottom half is on the right. And just so we could get a little closer look here. The property of um, the left, which is the existing home, uh, meets all the setbacks, um, as it is. There is an existing garage at the south end of that, which either the garage needs to go away, would need to be demolished, or part of it removed. The applicant has indicated that they would remove part of the existing garage in order to meet the setbacks. And also the new public utility easements that are required for the plat. So the south property, Lot 59B, on the southern portion of the portion of the property, it shows a five-foot PUE, but we will require that to be 10 feet because there is a uh, power line there. And so a 10-foot is required. So that would need to be changed. Um, with the setbacks of 25 feet front and rear for the new lot, the lot would also would face to the west. So the lot is only 75 feet deep and with 50 feet of setbacks, 25 front, 25 feet rear, that only gives a buildable area of about 25 feet for a home. The applicant has indicated that he has house plans that would fit on that. Um, so and that would be required to be met. Um, and let's see, I think that really is about it. So staff is recommending, um, oh, let's look at, sorry. Let's look at some pictures of it. So the photos here, the upper left is the front view and then the lower left is the rear view that shows the uh, power line. And then the other two on the right-hand side are both side views looking from Afton Avenue. You can see it's actually a really nice lot with some big trees, et cetera. Um, planning, we did send out 58 public notices. We did receive a couple of emails back, which you received in your packet. And then I have one more that was submitted today that I'd be happy to read um, when you would like. Uh, so staff is recommending approval for uh, the amendment to Lot 59, uh, subject to the eight conditions, I believe. And, yeah, seven, seven conditions as outlined. Any questions?
I have a question about the garage that needs to be demolished. So that that's just too close to the property line, so it's in the setback area. And so as a condition of subdividing, we're requiring them to either move the garage or or demolish the garage?
Yes, because because we're going to be amending a plat. It does require that there be PUEs, new public utility easements. Typically on a rear property line, the PUE is 10 feet, but where there are existing structures, the engineering division does have uh, the ability to to vary that a little bit, but they've still asked for a five-foot PUE on the south end. So the applicant is, applicant has indicated that they can remove, as shown on the site plan there, uh, a portion of the existing garage in order to meet the five-foot PUE. So it actually would be five feet, six inches. The garage would be five foot, six inches from the south property, the new property line.
So, okay, uh, I just want to understand. So the existing garage, was it not built with a I mean, was it built with a building plan? Was it approved by the city to build there?
Originally?
Yeah.
I believe so, you know, actually, it's been there a long time, but I didn't check.
I think I know where you're going with this.
Yeah.
It wasn't a property line there before.
So this, I see.
Subdiving, yeah.
Putting the new property line is creating.
I see, I'm sorry. I thought that line was the existing line. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't understand that. Yes, it was just one big lot. True, yes.
With the setbacks, I mean, it's looking like the footprint for this house will be very small, approximately 625 square feet? Is that, is?
Long, uh, narrow and long and narrow.
Right.
You mean the new one?
The new one, yeah.
Yes, it would, yes, and only really 25 feet deep home because it would have to face to the west. Yes.
How, what, so how, what can the footprint of the home be, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Well, it could come within, it's got to have 20 feet total on the sides, so it could technically have um, the width of 65 feet. No, excuse me, 55 feet. The lot is.
55 by?
75 feet?
75 feet deep. It's 100 feet long, so the home would be 80 feet, could be 25 by 80 feet, actually. Yeah.
Okay, that could actually be, that's, that could be a pretty, a pretty good-sized footprint then. Just a, just a, just a long, a long footprint.
Right, I would assume they would probably do a two-story, but I don't know that for sure, just to get the square footage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I clarify something on public comment or do we want to tell after public comment?
Um, yeah, I mean, you, I think ask him now.
So I had a, we have submitted public comment from Val Fuelo? I'm sorry if I butchered that. Um, he makes some mention of, he was told that he couldn't uh, do an expansion on his property because he needed a 20-foot setback and you're saying 25 feet is, they're just a misunderstanding there?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if we got the 20 feet, but I actually spoke with him on the phone, um, and explained to him the setbacks and and the clarification and emailed him the digital copy so he could.
But 25 feet is our setback.
But 25 feet is the front. I think he may be referring to a corner setback of 20 feet.
Hmm.
Which is, yeah, 20 feet, so.
Okay, thank you.
But it is 25, yes.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, then, um, if the applicant, when you are unmuted, uh, if you would state your name and address for the record?
Uh, yeah, I'm Adis Alajic. I'm with Just Property Management LLC. Uh, the address is 2825 South Bricks Avenue, West Valley City, Utah, 84120.
Great, thank you for being with us tonight. Uh, have you had an opportunity to review the conditions of approval?
Yes, I have.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh, is there any additional information that you would like to give us about this application?
Uh, no, uh, the question on footprint of the house, we're planning to do uh, 45, uh, 45 wide and uh, 24 feet uh, deep, so we'll be able to to meet all setbacks.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay, um, at Okay, um, at this point then, we will open the meeting for public comment regarding this item. If you would like to make a comment on this agenda item, you can do so by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Did we have anyone that registered to speak, make a live comment? Okay. And we received an email, right? We can read that into their.
Yes, we received actually an additional email from, uh, Mr. Conway, who sent one earlier. But, um, we received this today and it says, Dear Planning Commission, I live directly across from the proposed amendment, amendment location. Here is my views of Mount Olympus from the house. So he's included some very nice views of the mountain range. And then he says, um, this beautiful view of the mountains is the primary reason I purchased this home in Murray 17 years ago. If the developer is seeking to build another home on this lot, I am very worried about losing my view. However, I feel that the, that Murray City's 25-foot setback requirement, combined with a limit of two stories, should give me at least a partial view. As long as Murray's, Murray's building requirements are followed, to the letter, I feel protected. I also hope you will convey my wish to the builder that he refrain from building a huge home with excess massing along the front, in line with the character of the rest of the houses, on the block, all with 25-foot setbacks. I have a two-story house as well, but I am not blocking anyone's views of the mountains.
Thank you. Have we received any additional email comments? No, okay, then I will close the public comment portion, um, and bring it up to, for either discussion or a motion for this item.
I think just for discussion, I'd just tell that neighbor that they can have great confidence that the city's going to follow the code and not allow them to build something outside of what is allowed to anyone that lives in that zone.
Great, thank you.
I, I can make a motion to approve the proposed subdivision amendment for Murray Burton Acres Lot 59 at the property address 400 East Bellevue Avenue, subject to the, uh, the seven conditions that are, that are outlined below.
Very second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Lowry to approve the proposed subdivision amendment for Murray Burton Acres Lot 59 at the property address 400 East Bellevue Avenue, subject to the seven conditions. And a second by Commissioner Malkovich. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then we can take a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. Motion passes and good luck with your project.
Thank you, appreciate you all.
Thanks for being here. All right, um, agenda item number seven, land use text amendment, code section 17 dot 48 dot 120.
Great, thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is a text amendment for temporary sign regulations. This is a citywide, uh, text amendment that affects all temporary signs within the city. Uh, as you know, temporary signs can come in a number of fashions. So political signs, opening soon signs, coming soon signs, all sorts of things. So we are proposing that, um, originally this came about because the city recorder had asked whether, uh, those applying to run for council or mayor needed to obtain a permit because the current code had a conflicting, had a conflict in there, saying that in one section, yes, you had to obtain a permit for anything, for a temporary sign, uh, as well as there was another section that said that they didn't need to have a permit. So we decided to take this on and bring it forward to address some of the issues that we've seen with the temporary sign ordinance. There's plenty of other, uh, areas that we want to address in the sign ordinance, but this one was the most pressing, and so we decided to move forward with it. So, um, if you'll remember, the city council adopted the, the sign ordinance in May 20, on May 21st, 2019. And, um, kind of just talked about all that, so never mind. Then, um, another thing that we decided to remove was, uh, it's kind of been a, a little thing in, in the office. There used to be a requirement for this little Murray sticker to be placed on temporary signs. We were never able to find a vendor that would sell a sign that was weatherproof or a sticker that would be weatherproof to adhere to vinyl or any type of signage. So, um, we, that has not been enforced to this date. So we, we have asked that the, uh, that that be struck as well. Let's see, see if there's anything else of, um, note. No off-premise signs. In the pre-meeting, Commissioner Wilson did, uh, ask about real estate signs. So those are covered in another, in the, in a residential section of, of the sign code that would allow for develop, development signs and for-sale signs, open house, those kinds of things. I feel like I'm saying signs a lot, so I apologize. Probably not as much as I say "um" though, so. With that, uh, we are recommending approval, that you send a recommendation of approval to the city council to amend the text of the temporary sign ordinance. Any questions I can answer at this point?
Any questions for staff? Okay. We would like, I'll open the public comment portion, um, regarding, regarding this agenda item. If you would like to make a comment, you can do so by emailing planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Did we have anyone registered to make a public comment?
No, we didn't.
Then we will, um, leave the public comment portion open for a minute to receive any emails.
This is a real hot topic.
Everybody cares about.
Yeah, temporary signs.
If it was permanent signs, we'd have a lot.
You would.
Have we received any email comments?
No, we haven't.
Then we can close the public comment period and I'll bring it back to the commission for any discussion or emotion.
I think, I think it's appropriate for us to thank staff for taking the time to go through and clean this up. It looks better.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the request to amend the text of section 17 dot 48 dot 120, temporary signs in the Murray City land use ordinance as presented in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Sue has it.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, or Pearson, and a second by Commissioner Wilson to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the request to amend the text of section 17 point 48 point 120, temporary signs in the Murray City land use ordinance as presented by staff. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, we can take a vote.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. Motion passes.
Cool.
Is there any further business?
Um, I would just say we have a busy, not necessarily a big, busy next couple meetings, but, um, are, do we have anybody going to be out the first of July?
I am.
You will be out, okay. If you guys do decide that you're not able to attend, please let us know ahead of time. I was telling Commissioner Nay earlier on in the evening, we're hoping to bring forward the ADU ordinance that brings forward the state changes, so I'm pretty excited about that. I've been working on that for a while with, with Bryant's help and, um, so that's been a lot of fun. That'll be fun to bring forward. Uh, we also have a few things. A mixed-use project that was actually, uh, it had been vested before the moratorium went into, into place. So you will be seeing that come forward as well as a couple, a subdivision and another subdivision. So, yeah, fun stuff. And then Jared will be hammering you all over the head in the next little while as well. At some point, sorry. Oh, yes, and we are going full public meetings starting July 1st. Yep, July 1st will be, people are welcome back, um, so.
Okay.
Be prepared.
Can I ask a question on that? Are we going to have still a hybrid format as far as, um, people being able to call in or, or register comments?
That's a grand question that hasn't quite been figured out yet.
For July 1st, I think, I think it's safe to say for July 1st it happens. Because, did we send notices today?
No.
Okay, so, but. On July 1st, there won't be Zoom comments.
Yeah.
We, we could reinstitute it again later if we, if we decide as a commissioner that's a, uh, that there's a good way to do it and, and not overburden staff trying to run a Zoom meeting while we're trying to present, et cetera, and, and a live meeting as well. So for July 1st, it will just be live. People can still email comments. But, and we'll have Zoom available, so if, if, for example, we didn't have, um, a forum where Sue wants to participate by Zoom, we could keep on doing that. But we're, we're not going to, on July 1st, we have not at this point planned to take comments through Zoom or to have people participate by Zoom. Applicants will expect them to come here live.
I'll just say that, you know, with everything that's gone on in the last 18 months or however long, I kind of think the public now expects it and it's a convenience that maybe we ought to consider. I, you know, again, though, I, I say we follow the lead of the city council so that we have consistency in government, but I just think that, you know, I think we've set precedents now and it's a new way of doing things and it seems to have worked relatively well in the big scheme of things.
And I think the reason why we've decided to, um, not do it for this first meeting is because the council is cutting it off.
Yep.
So, uh, they're, yeah, they're doing no Zoom, I don't think at all. So, um, I think that's kind of where we're headed at the moment.
I'm a, I'm a little bit of a worried word. We've had all this different language on the notices and on the agendas for so long. I'm worried that if it wasn't very clear that it was one way or the other this first time out or first few times out, you might be confused if it's still got that Zoom language on it. Do they think, oh, maybe I'm not allowed to go live? I was ready to go back and talk. I can talk at the city council, but I can't go to the, want to have that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
I love stickers, so I think it's outrageous.
We were executing it so well this whole time.
I apologize for not knowing the answer to this, is, what are the guidelines within the city buildings? Nothing required, recommendations, just?
Should be CDC requirement, or guidelines with, um, just.
Capacity?
Yeah.
Well, capacity, a mask or nothing, there's nothing in play.
The state legislature, uh, passed, uh, something, I don't remember what it was called. It was like Endgame. Oh, yes.
Called the Wide Open Act, everything goes.
Yeah, it was, it literally was called the Endgame. Um, and that removed all requirements for everything.
35%?
And, and said that all cities cannot institute things like that. So they preempted everything and said, no.
Okay.
Winner winner.
So we are back. We can pack this room full.
112.
112.
Yes. Okay, that was it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 7:12 PM.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks.